Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Vader, it's my privilege to officially declare this meeting to order at 7:00 PM.
I said seven, it's actually six. Sorry.
Oh, my word. Yes, I've lost an hour of my life. It's 6:00 PM.
First motion is a new clock.
We're off and running here. Thanks, Mike. Well, we'll declare it open at 6:00 PM on this July 13th, 2017. Welcome all present.
Can you pull that mic there?
We won't reach in for the right now.
That's the part that will go.
I can stretch it over another day, but right now it's all just stuff, so I can't move it right now.
It sounds a little better than I got a little far. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Well, with that, let's proceed with our official roll call.
Okay. Andy Wilson.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
He's been or asked to be excused.
Okay. Mike Carson.
Here.
Leona Sandra Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Tim Smith.
All so present, so we have a quorum, so we can officially proceed. And we'll now invite all to please round and join the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Daley, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no repeat and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll proceed expeditiously with the mayor's report. I would first like to express appreciation, I'm sure, on behalf of the city council and other elected officials, for the very successful Fourth of July celebration that took place this past weekend. And we have present with us who are the chief supporters and leaders in that event, Reggie and his wife Linda Smith. Instead of listening to my monotonous voice, Reggie, would you like to share with all present here your thoughts on the Fourth of July event?
Thank you. And most people know Mayor Reggie's name. Actually, fortunately, we're going one major flaw, and that was our power coupler for that was given to us by Castle Rock School District. They only had thirty amp main, and it kept blowing on us. But Castle Rock Superintendent Mike.
Oh, that's Jim.
Jim, Jim Mabbett. Said he's going to rectify that year next year. I had a long talk with him, and he was ecstatic about the Fourth of July that we had. And he used to now ask me, "Well, does that mean we can have it again?" And he says, "Reggie, you can have that Fourth of July anytime you want. I'm backing you a hundred percent." Because we really had a good event with the food, the cotton candy, popcorn, dump tanks, prizes for the children, and we had lots of people, as everyone saw. We had a great event, just an awesome event. So we have a good prospect of having it again next year with backwards by the Castle Rock School District and Jim. And we're going to have, I have an organization now that is going to do next year's organization, organizing of the program and what we're going to do. And so we won't, my wife and I won't have to work so hard. I've been able to get a crew of people together that's going to work with me and my wife and the city, and we'll be even better able to do a better show next year. So with the city on our side, and I thank you. Did you see the advertisement that we put in the Chronicle?
Sure did.
We tried to make sure that everyone who contributed physically or monetarily were shown that we, what's the word I'm looking for, I'm not good at the podium, appreciated their services and their money. Because without extra money, without extra donations, we could not put off a show like that. I was lucky to have Johnny Ray, known as his Bandstand. He came out of, what's that, Sulcam?
Sulcam.
Sulcam. Made a phone call, didn't know the math matter, and he said, "Reggie, it's yours. You just asked for it, I'll bring it to you." We were able to create a lot of friendships, and we might even get Johnny Ray's band next year. And his is a well-known band that goes to Reno, Las Vegas, Cino's, a well-known band.
Really?
Yes. So it looks like everything's going to go well for next year. That's all I really have to say.
We should.
No questions? No questions, I'm out of here.
Well, don't go too far.
Reggie, well, again, you approved your wife, Oliver, the work she put into it.
Oh, she did. She did. Believe me, she told me all that, and she was stressed. But it really turned out well. Other than a few hiccups here and there, especially Jim and Jim over at Castle Rock High School who were doing it, he was impressed.
He was, yeah.
And so, and by the way, he wants to come and see my Halloween decorations. There's a funny reason, I might want to make a short little story. I was over at the Castle Rock Superintendent's office, and he said, "Reggie, come here, you got, come here, I've got to show you these other people." And he said, "How good our fireworks work to these other people in the school district." He said, "But what's really great is, he really likes following as much as I do." And he says, "I get to come and see all my, his Halloween decorations."
Reggie, if the man would like to see them off-season, he can visit them in my garage.
By the way, I'm going to tell the city council, I'm buying for permits and prints, I'm going to be building a garage this year.
Fantastic.
So, go on, sign off.
You're done.
I'm done.
Oh, you need to go on prayer.
I was reaching for my gavel, there was nobody. I know in this technical world, it's hardly silence those cell phones, but we share your pain, Steve. Well, thank you, Reggie, for that wonderful report, it was much better than I could ever have done. But I must echo the sentiments that you've shared regarding Jim Mabbett. He brought his entire family and extended family, brought me into the midst of their little group, and I think I've been adopted into the Mabbett family. They're so personable, it was most impressive. And they were a very.
He did sit down with them, too.
Yes, you're part of that, well, Smith, I guess. But no, it was a very generous offer and unexpected that we can use that facility next year. It resolves some huge issues that we would have had to address, so that is a great blessing.
Thought it was comical, you go by the Castle Rock High School on the Fourth of July and says, "No fireworks on school ground." It's okay over here.
Well, how funny. Yeah, that's definitely, yeah. And we know that every year we engage in this, we're going to streamline and improve our coordinating efforts with Reggie, and I know we've been, have been compiling a notebook and folder with ways that we can be more helpful and uncomplicate things to the extent that we can. So hopefully it'll be much more stress-free next year. Yeah, okay, and with that, thank you, let's now proceed with item number two. We are in the lookout for a volunteer to represent Vader on a group, a team, as they say, that they're forming with regard to the new preschool program. And so we've been asked to make it a matter of public record if anybody within the sound of my voice knows of somebody that they think might be willing, it would require their attendance at an occasional meeting, which would be about once a month, is that correct?
Well, they're not sure. They said once a month is what they're anticipating, but it's actually a Castle Rock School Facility Team meeting, so it would involve more than just, just the preschool, it would be, they want a representative from Vader to be a part of their facility teams because we have people who go to school there. And so I went for the first one, however, I was thinking that probably would be better to have somebody who's a little more involved or in the school system and maybe have a little bit more.
If we could discern the availability of maybe a parent who might have a child or children involved in it.
I would have to check with the individual, but there is a teacher who is currently not working, has a degree in special ed, is very interested in preschool program, she's accredited. I could approach her, if she might be interested.
Okay, well, we would appreciate that. Let Jill know what she can find.
I shall, yes, they have to talk to the preschool.
All right, well, thank you for that. All right, I felt it appropriate after the feedback that we've kindly been given regarding our website. We're intensifying our focus on that, and we're going to do our best to make it more functional and informative to those who use it. And we've actually received, in the spirit of altruism, an invitation from an individual to assist in that. I won't throw Leon's name out, but the city council is embracing that. And so, stay tuned, we're going to see what we can do to make that a more functional and effective tool or resource for us. Okay. I wanted to report for the council that we have a planning meeting scheduled for 2:00 PM on July 24th. That'll be the first planning meeting for the newly constituted members of it, those that, so hopefully, what we're going to have is some representatives from the State Department of Commerce who will come to specifically train those who are on committee.
What time is that?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Okay.
I've been trying to reach you.
How are you trying to reach me?
I've thought about it after.
Smoke signals.
But we tried to orchestrate that the best we could with the members on.
No.
Okay, I think, oh, yes, and I wanted to call to your attention that you should have received an annual report.
Handing them out.
Okay, there we go, there's piling. Thank you, Jill.
And our mayor will come up to the attention as well.
Yeah, these are always due on May 31st. We got them out on May 11th, three weeks before they were due, but it occurred to us that we should make it available for council review.
That's on the website if you want to do the contact.
We do, Mike.
So feel free to, feel free to review it at your leisure and use it to heighten your awareness of the current status of our community. It's a valuable report. And we thank Jill for the time and effort that it takes to put this together.
If it's like reading Greek, feel free to call me or come in, and I'll be happy to go through and explain what it is you're looking at if you're not sure or if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. I think that concludes the mayor's report. So I will invite any members of the council who might have some information they want to share or report on.
Who's paying for these long-distance telephone calls?
This is a call.
I am, Andy. I called in, thank you for bringing it to everyone's attention, I appreciate that. So I called in this time, and I'll call in from now on, and Jill, give me a cost of the last long-distance phone calls, I'd be more than happy to pay it.
Very good. Does that answer your question?
That answered quite a bit.
Okay, good. All righty, well, thank you, Mike, for that clarification and your generosity.
I did have a person ask me about the pile of gravel that they dumped, dumped by the sewer treatment plant. Is that available for people to use on their alleyways and things like that?
No, well, I think it's for use in that regard, but I think that we ought to get our city employee involved in that process so that we can monitor the quantities, since it does incur a cost from the city. So I think the answer is yes. So if you know somebody who needs it, because heaven knows, there are some significant potholes, and that's what it's for.
You crazy man.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we should contact if someone has got a pothole like that, they can contact us and are here, tell John.
Yeah, it'll get passed along, and he is responsible to that. Now, but there's one thing, to take gravel and just put it in a rainy season puddle, it just gets eaten by Mother Earth. There are strategies that might be helpful to slow that process. Do you have a comment?
I do not. So I'm kind of the baby to the council here, but sitting in these meetings, I've noticed that one of the big issues seems to be communication. So that being said, if I'm going to be helping with the website, if there's something somebody wants acknowledged or something everybody needs to know, and you think that's a good way to do it, if you could leave a message with Jill or get in hold of me or whatever, we can see what we can work out to get that on there so that there's no gap in the communication and everybody knows what is what. Hopefully that will eliminate some of the issues that seem to be reoccurring over and over and over and over. If I can get an okay to put it on, I would be happy to put it on. If it's something that shouldn't be put on, I'm sorry. But hopefully this, we can make this work for everybody.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay, well, then let's proceed with the next agenda item, which is the approval of our this evening's city council agenda, noting, of course, that item number four has been deleted because we didn't get the anticipated information we needed to conduct the discussion.
Well, did we approve an amended agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for 7/13/2017 with the amended number four under city business.
Heard the motions, ready by Mr. Daley to approve the agenda with the amended deletion of item number four.
I second.
That's been seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
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 If there are any opposed, the motion is carried. Now the approval of the minutes from our previous city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for city council meeting 6/22/2017.
Mr. Daley again has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written for the dates indicated. Do you have a second? Seconded again by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
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 If there are any opposed, that motion is also carried. Vouchers approvals for the first of July.
I make a motion, we approve the first of July 2017, $20,482.54.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand.
Oh, twenty-nine thousand, excuse me, $482.54.
Okay, Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve the vouchers for the first of April in the amount indicated. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Leon. All in favor, say aye.
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 All, any opposed, the motion is carried. The special reports. We have our sheriff's representative, deputy chisman, so you're invited to take the podium.
So you have the copy of, let's see, June. There was a total of 449 contacts, there was four on-ship calls and 16 on-ship calls, two criminal calls, one was a death that was solved by an arrest, and an assault that was followed by arrest, so both of the two criminals have been solved by arrests. There were some other dispute-type deals and a lot of information calls. And you had one death, which we term any death or death investigation, and it usually takes about three to five months for all that information to come back from the coroner's office, because they do toxicology and everything else before those are all cleared out, so nothing that it looks suspicious, it's just that it stays with the death investigation until that's totally all, everything's all compiled on whatever was done there. And, I think that's it.
We have a question from the audience.
249 calls in the month of June?
No, contacts.
Contact.
People contact.
People contact.
That's good.
One or two.
And the death.
449 contacts.
And the death was not a murder?
No, it's not, it's not a specific murder.
And did it enjoy the Fourth of July?
Yes, it did enjoy the Fourth of July.
Oh, I was thinking, the last time I asked about the stop sign issue, that was actually July. Last week, within the past week, there was almost a serious accident there. Somebody was coming south of D Street, stopped at the stop sign, went to turn left, and a car was literally, yeah, it was going 50 miles an hour coming down D Street. And if you go up there, you can see his brake marks from his locking tires, and he, I'm surprised it didn't hit the car, he went around it, went flying down the road even further, and the car was trying to turn up, turn around, I don't know if you guys got a call on that, but they turned around and followed that car, and I don't know what happened, but it did haunt it, did haunt it. I don't get why a stop sign is so significant.
There's no road right now.
I think we'd see that in probably any community, but in ours, it's especially noticeable.
But you're saying that they ran the stop sign that had been there for quite some time, though? Not the new stop sign.
Just something to add is that our public works employee has purchased paint to make more significant stop lines, and that put new stop lines where the new signs, where the new stop signs are, that there aren't stop lines yet, so that's just another visual reminder to help people. They're working on that corner, and will also be especially focusing on the corner six and A, like a church, to get some stop lines down there, so that'll be something that works out next week, so trying to continue to help that.
It's a lovely thing, but.
I wonder, I've never looked into it, but I wonder what the expense would be to getting those obnoxious flashing? They really could not miss that.
We've gone into that.
Yeah, the county even tried one of those on Rush Road, but they put a new stop sign in there, not make you hook. Although, I don't know if you've noticed, even most of them on Highway 12, you might look at, they put red reflective paint on that metal post.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
So you can buy red reflective paint, paint that metal post all the way down, that seems to help a little.
Yeah, well, that's obviously something, if the council member wanted to put it on the agenda, we could explore it more deeply, but as an offshoot of this report. Thank you. So with that, let's proceed with our public comment.
We do, first on the list, we have Cindy Rassler, we have four people.
Four, okay, four, all right.
However, I don't know if Reggie's already.
I'd like to reiterate, the mayor comments at the last city council meeting, I had a chance to go back and listen to the YouTube recording, and it was not any better the second time around. I was upset that he used some words that I didn't think were appropriate, and I don't think any of the citizens of Vader deserve to be called liar, arrogant, contentious, hateful, and especially ignorant. And I would hope that that was a one-time, maybe a motion got the best of people, and that it won't happen again, or hasn't happened in the past. But I'd like to remind everyone, especially Mr. Smith, you represent everybody, regardless of whether they agree with you or not, and we have a right to consent, you know, contest things, we have a right to stand up here and say our piece, and I don't think that we deserve to be called anything, especially liars or ignorant, and that was out of line, and I think that I certainly hope it doesn't happen again. Second, I sent a letter to the city council a little over a month ago, it was a minor issue, but it was something that the mayor did not agree with, and so he chose not to give it to the city council. He doesn't have a right to impede mail that is sent to the city council, and he should forward on it. If he doesn't agree with it, he can put a cover letter on it, he can say, "I don't agree with this position, and, you know, please take it with a grain of salt," or whatever, but he has to forward mail that is sent to the city council. And furthermore, you have to kind of ask, what else has he not sent? What else has he decided that doesn't fit his agenda, he does not want you guys to see it? You deserve to have all the information that is sent to you, regardless if it's good, bad, or indifferent, and it should not be censored by the mayor or the city clerk or anybody else. You need all the information that is sent to you so you can make the tough decisions that you have to make. And I would hope that the city council has what my mother used to call a "come to Jesus" meeting, that I passed you up, that this is not acceptable, and regardless of the content of the letter, that it should be sent and forwarded on to the city council.
Okay, very good. Well, that's what public comment is for, and I personally have given careful consideration if I might respond to that, from the exchange that took place in our last city council meeting, and I'm not going to sit here and claim that my performance was laudable, it was regrettable, so I'm going to assure all present that I will strive to be more civil and respectful to individuals who are members of the public and who are here voluntarily to observe. So thank you for that, and I hope that is helpful. With that having been said, however, I will, I am aware of the drama and tension that takes place with members of the public and our city personnel, a lot of which, a lot of the comments in our last council meeting involved them, and I could have gotten into greater detail about some of the aspersions and comments and allegations that were, I considered unfounded and fact-free, and their substance, that were targeting very subtly our city employees. So I will continue to defend them with what I perceive as the truth, and if necessary, will but try to be civil in the process. As far as the letter that's been referred to, I did get a copy of that letter, it invited me to share it with the city council, but I'm under no specific legal obligation to share that, despite what the individuals may think. I didn't feel the contents were fact-based, so I exercised my prerogative, if somebody thinks that there is a legal obligation, I'd be happy to explore that, but I chose not to share it, and invited that individual to go ahead and send copies directly to members of the council. So that was an option that could have been taken, and would invite others to do likewise if they were so inclined. But that's my comment, I would proceed forward with that. We have, would like to, but I don't think public. We have, would like to, but I don't think public comment is intended to be an exchange or an interrogation-type format, so with that, you know, I'll leave the prerogative up to the council if you want to entertain a public comment.
Is it nice?
It's nice.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that at the top of the letter, it said, "To the City Council, to the City Mayor, and to the City Clerk," so it was actually to you, it wasn't his prerogative to say that's going off to you. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Yes, but a copy, the only copy was sent to me, so-
What type of the city-
Regardless, it's my prerogative.
Right, right.
Sorry, here we go. All right, the next public comment.
Next on the list is Judy Costello. I'm ready, I have a long list, and if over my three minutes, I will ask for an extra minute if you need.
Thank you.
Judy Costello, 798 T. Peter. First on my list is the Citywide Yard Sale is scheduled for Saturday, August the 5th, it will be from eight to four, master available on my corner at my house, and so far we have twenty people signed up, so things are going well. Second, and this is a request to council, I would like to do a presentation at the next council meeting, and I'm requesting ten minutes of your time, and I would like to have a dialogue with you about portable, commercial, business buildings. I certainly believe that in order to have business in Vader, we need something to put the businesses in, so I have an idea, and I'm going to provide you with a packet with some information a week before, so you'll have time to look over it, so possibly we could have some dialogue at that time, if you'd go to let me do that. The next thing on my list is, I would like to, this is a-